Good evening, candidates, voters, and patrons. Since the Collinsville Library was founded in 1915, 100 years ago this year, it has been... It has been our goal to help educate patrons and help them educate themselves. Tonight, it is our goal to help educate you about the candidates running for the upcoming elections for city council, school board, and mayor. Each candidate will have the opportunity to give a one-minute opening statement and then be able to answer questions that were prepared by our committee. Replies to these questions can last up to one minute each. Audience members, you were also invited to submit questions. They have been weeded through, and some of them will be used tonight. While we do want this evening to be informative and educational, we also want it to be somewhat fun and entertaining. So after the serious questions in each round, we're going to have a handful of rapid-response questions for the candidates, which candidates will be able to answer in just a few words. Following the rapid-response round, we will allow each candidate to give a closing statement, which can be up to two minutes long. To help you all stay on track and to guarantee that we're not here until midnight, we will have a volunteer with a timer in the front row, and she'll hold up a sign letting you each know when you have 15 seconds left for your replies and when to stop. We will begin with introductions. They can be up to one minute long, and they will start with Gary Clark.
Thank you, Jen. I appreciate the opportunity to be here before you this evening. My name is Gary Clark, and I am running for reelection to the school board. It's interesting, one after serving on the term for four years, you get a complete different insight on how things are run and what exactly it is and what it means to be a school board member. I've lived in the community since 1987. I'm married to my lovely wife Shirley, who we've been married 42 years. We have three grown children, all of which are out of...well, two of the daughters are out of the area. We have a son and his family who live in Maryville. I've been quite active in the community. I've been around for a long, long time and involved in a lot of activities, and the most recent was Festival of Trees, which we did in honor of Irving Dillard, and I'm supposed to stop. Thanks.[169.15][169.15](laughter)
Thank you, Mr. Kraft.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Kraft. I'm a lifelong resident of Collinsville. Graduated from Collinsville High School in 1966. I'm a Vietnam veteran, served in the United States Air Force for four years, and after I got out of the military, I went to SIUE, received my bachelor's degree in elementary education, and I met my wife, Jean. She's a saint, putting up with me for close to 40 years. We have two beautiful children, Jeff and Laura, and they have given us and blessed us with four fabulous grandchildren. I've also received my master's degree from SIUE and my doctorate from St. Louis University in Education Leadership. For 37 years, I spent serving the community as teacher, elementary principal, assistant superintendent, and superintendent of schools, and I retired as of four years ago, and I'm looking to run for the school board as a write-in candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hales?
Hi. My name is Rob Hales. I have been a Collinsville resident since 1991. I'm happily married for 24 years to my wife Toni. We have four children, two of which have already graduated through the Collinsville School Districts. I've got two more in high school now, as a junior and a senior. I'm a graduate of SIU Carbondale. I work in the field of assistive technology, where I provide wheelchairs for individuals in need. I have a passion for Collinsville, the school district, and I'd like to see it improve and see if we can get this community back on track to where we have more than 2% growth from what I've heard earlier today. So I believe that we need to do that in the school districts and work our way forward from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Penny?
My name is Scott...my name is Scott Penny Jr. Sorry. My name is Scott Penny Jr. I'm 26-years-old. I'm from Fairmont City. I've lived in the Metro East my entire life. I didn't originally plan on running, but after there were three people on the ballot and I saw that there was an opportunity for a write-in, I felt a need to volunteer my time and make a four-year commitment to do some good. I think I can bring a positive outlook, a positive outlook from my generation, so I think I'm fair, and I also think I'm a reasonable person and can make some good decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Penny. Mr. White?
Thank you. Oh, I apologize for that. I'd like to thank Ms. Hill, Mr. Robbins, Mr. Shesky, and all who put this form together, and everyone who was in attendance tonight. I'm Wayne White, and I'm running for reelection for the school board. I graduated from CHS in 1990 in Illinois State University in '94. I've been happily married to my wife Renee for 20 years. We have three children, two of which already graduated from CHS. My daughter is at the zoo. I'm a 20-year veteran law enforcement officer, and I'm currently a lieutenant with the Glen Carbon Police Department. I've been on the board for two terms already. I've served on the Board Budget Committee, and I'm the board secretary as well. In addition to being on the school board, I'm also the president of the Maryville Police and Fire Commission, and the president of the Glen Carbon Police Pension Board. I'm a very proud K-Hawk who cares passionately about this district, and I just hope that everybody will give me the chance to continue to serve. Thank you.
Thank you all. The...it is also worth noting that Jane Sulkey is running for reelection. She is at the K-Hawk basketball game tonight and is there, so she is running for reelection. The first question is for Mr. Kraft, and it is, "I have a son who is a little over a year and a half old, which means he'll be starting school in just a few years. Other than a public education being much more affordable than a private education, why would you enroll your children in Unit 10 schools?"
Well, from the standpoint of what we have to offer as far as curriculum is concerned, I think we do offer a very, very great curriculum. We have a preschool program and also the All-Day Kindergarten Program, in which we started a number of years ago, that we were the first district in the Metro East area to offer that. I think we also have a fantastic vocational program at the high school and as well as enrichment and advanced placement courses at the high school. When I had retired, I knew we had at least 15 advanced placement courses for the students to participate in and could receive college credit if they had qualified. So very, very proud of what Collinsville Unit 10 has done and continues to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hales?
I believe that Collinsville and a public education have a great opportunity or provide a great opportunity for individuals. From what I understand, you know, I came from a public-educated area. From what I understand about privately-educated stuff, though, you know, besides the cost is, you know, the curriculum, being able to put together the relationships, being more integrated with all types of individuals, whether it be race and females and males and everybody together, I think that provides an excellent opportunity for growth in an individual, and I chose to have my children in public school just to be more well-rounded individuals as they grow.
Thank you. Mr. Penny?
Well, aside from making sure that our curriculum is lined up and in compliance with the state law and also the regulations, I have monitored firsthand. I have relatives in the district, children at each age group, coming from intermediate, junior high, and high school, and I've always been kind of the relative that they've talked to about making sure that things are on track as far as in the classroom, so I have always been impressed, and that's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Any student who goes to Unit 10 schools is going to receive a quality education. We have outstanding teachers. We have very good curriculum. We have top-notch vocational center. My daughter graduated just two years ago, along with many other K-Hawks, and she and so many others are excelling at the college level. If you had to ask me why you should send your son to Unit 10, it's because he's going to get the type of education you want him to get to be successful in life, and it's going to be a well-rounded education. We have a diverse student body, and so it's not just the education he's going to get in the classroom, it's the education he's also going to get building relationships with different races, different religions, and that's not the type of thing you're going to get at every school district. If you send your child to private school, a lot of times it's going to be cookie cutter, and that's not the real world. Unit 10 provides a real-world education. That's why you should send your son to Unit 10.
Thank you. And Mr. Clark?
I'm sorry, I have to stand. I'm the teacher, and the teacher in me will not allow me to sit and talk at the class, so I have to stand up. And so, as well as Jen knows, I would send my children...I sent my children here, so we made a conscious choice to do that, and I truly believe, and they've all been successful in their careers, and I think it all depends on the involvement of the parent as much as anything, and being involved with your own child and being concerned with their education and being an active part of that is extremely important. But I also think that we've got top-notch teachers. I know we have those top-notch teachers and administrators, and because of those reasons, I continue to say, "Bring them on and have more than one."[723.01][723.01](laughter)
All right, we're done here, people.[730.12][730.12](laughter) All right, thank you all for that. All right. The next question goes to Mr. Hales, and the question is, "What are areas of improvement for the school district that you would like to focus on?"
I'm concerned about our facilities. My kids have gone here, you know, lived there all their lives, 22-year-old twins who graduated through Collinsville High School. I don't believe that we've kept our facilities up to standards. I would love to see the improvements there, because with the improvements of the facilities, I do believe that we would also be able to increase our opportunities here in the district and here in Collinsville for people to move into Collinsville. I came here, you know, in 1991, and I came to Collinsville because it was the only town that I knew that had a basketball program that was pretty well-known. So we chose Collinsville over that, so I would like to see that we really work and strive to improve our facilities so that the housing market comes back up and that we can make all that a part of it and make Collinsville a wonderful place to live.
Thank you. Mr. Penny?
I think constantly working on improving a safe environment at the school, which will be working with not only the students but the staff and making sure parents feel safe having their kids at the school. I'm sorry, this is my first public forum. I'm a little bit nervous.
Me too, man.[832.61][832.61](laughter)
Making sure, working with everybody, keeping it...making sure that we're maintaining anti-bullying programs, making sure faculty, staff, and also the student resource officer are all constantly getting the best training and know how to handle any type of situation so everybody feels safe and comfortable.
Thank you. Mr. White?
As a 20-year law enforcement officer, my top priority has and will remain making our schools as safe as possible for not only the students but all the staff as well. When I came on board eight years ago, I made a commitment that I would do everything I could to make our schools safe. During that time, we've implemented a program that we now identify every single person who comes into Collinsville Schools that wasn't there before. We've initiated a program. We now have more than 100 cameras down at the high school. They weren't there before. There's still room for improvement. At our grade schools, we still have open campuses. We need to make our schools as safe as possible, and it's for everybody. In addition to that, secondary would be facility improvement, because I firmly believe that families do decide where to move, not only based on test scores but also facilities. And our rate of growth compared to Edwardsville, and I'm there all the time working in Glen Carbon, has been lower, and I know part of it is because they have better facilities than we do.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Clark?
I would like to really focus on meeting the needs of our students, and by that I mean increasing the amount of students ready to move on in the curriculum and seeing their graduation rate, that all students are on track to graduate, and make sure that everyone who graduates is ready for college or a vocational career, military, or whatever that might be. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Kraft?
I echo Mr. Clark's statement. I think that...I feel that Collinsville Unit 10 offers a fantastic curriculum. We have a wonderful staff, teachers, administrators, non-certified. I think they work very well together, along with the central staff, administrative staff in the school board. I would like for us to continue to grow and enhance and make our achievement higher. Do you realize that Collinsville, well, four years ago, I know, and then last year, we had over $2 million worth of scholarships granted to high school seniors? That's phenomenal. Yes, we could do better, but for Collinsville High School to have established that as a goal and we have achieved it, I think is remarkable, and that has to go to the staff as well as the students and the parents of those children. Thank you.
Thank you all. This next question kind of ties in. What would you like to see be added to the curriculum offered in the district? What do you believe should be done to increase both student attendance and student achievement? And it begins with Mr. Penny.
Well, I think...I skipped my bio, but I went to Northern Illinois. I got a teaching degree and emphasis on health, and I think health is a very important class. It's constantly changing and evolving from my pyramid to my plate. I think constant...I think we could probably invest a little more time and effort into that. That is what I would be focusing a little bit more on, working on health and the right times and ages to implement that in the classroom.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Could you repeat the question so long?
Yes. Sorry, it kind of has two parts. What would you like to see be added to the curriculum offered in the district, and what do you believe should be done to increase both student attendance and student achievement?
Well, that's a lot. As far as what classes to add on, anything with math and science that's going to help our students achieve more in those two areas. We've implemented some programs to help in those areas. We've got the STEM program now. However, there's room for improvement. I'd like to see more advanced placement in both math and science. As far as getting more student attendance, Mr. Clark touched on it a bit earlier. The bottom line is that comes down to the parents. You know, as administrators and as truant officers and as police officers, we can only do so much, but parents have to be responsible for getting their kids to school and taking an entrance in how well they perform. If parents care, most of the time, the children would be successful.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Well, being a former vocational teacher, I'd like to see the increase in vocational programs offered in the school district, number one, but I also echo what Mr. White said. Of course, math and science is most definitely important, but all curriculum is important. It's hard to select one and say, "This is what needs to..."you know, "This is where the emphasis should be," or whatever, but vocational to me because it is near and dear to my heart. Incentives for attendance or whatever that we need to do, of course, is important. We used to have everything from if you didn't miss any days, then you didn't have to take semester exams, so that was successful, but there's all kinds of things to look at, and we need to work closely with the parents to see what's going to work to get that kid there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
From the standpoint, I'm going to take the other avenue. I think what Mr. White and Mr. Clark had mentioned about the high school vocational, that's true. We need to take a look and see how we could establish more advanced placement in science and math. But on the other end is the elementary, and I do believe, and since being an elementary teacher and principal, we really need to make sure that our students, five-year-olds, six-year-olds, seven-year-olds, have the foundation to work off of to achieve those goals once they get to middle school and to the high school. I do believe, since I left, there's a thing called Common Core. I think that is a very sensitive issue with a lot of people, and I think in being in education for 37 years, you see so many things come through, from learning objectives to Common Core. It changes. It's like a roulette wheel, you might say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Hales?
You know, I probably don't know enough about what curriculum there is in the school district to say that anything needs to be added, but what I will say is that, you know, I do echo what Mr. Kraft says, is that, you know, we have to start with the elementary, and we have to build that good core foundation with those students. We have to instill that willingness to learn. We have to work with the parents, and we have to make them understand that this is important, this is their life, this is their way out, this is their way to achieve the dreams that they have. I believe that we need to challenge each one of these kids, and they may need to be challenged in different ways. I know that the curriculum is there, the higher courses are there, but I still feel that there isn't always a challenge there for that student in order to achieve what he needs to achieve, and I believe we need to stress that and make it fun for these kids to learn again. Thank you.
Thank you all. The next question is, "What do you think of the current fiscal and financial position of the school district, and if needed, how do you plan to increase revenues within the district?" And it starts with Mr. White.
Well, I'm very proud to say that Unit 10 is in excellent shape in terms of our financial profile. In fact, we've got the highest financial profile in the Metro East. A lot of people probably don't know that. That's the truth, though. There's different categories that a school district could be put in, and we are in the highest. In case anybody wanted to know, Edwardsville's actually in the lowest, because they spend not only all the money they have but all the money they don't have. You wouldn't have guessed that, I'm sure. As far as generating revenue, it's really not the place of a school board to generate revenue. That's not our job. However, that being said, it's everybody's job to work collectively to try to make the community that we live in better, and if we could all go out there and support our local businesses, and we can support one another, and we can get more people to move into Unit 10, that will generate tax revenue.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Well, I would have to echo with Mr. White, and he took quite a bit of my thunder there on the financial part of it, but we are in excellent shape, and that is because I truly believe that we are concerned with how we spend our taxpayers' money, and I think that's important. You know, we're elected to serve you, not just serve our own self-interest, and to spend that money wisely is our responsibility. So we can't go out and fundraise and help do that, but we can spend it wisely, and I think that's what you elect us to do. I guess if there's one thing that I'm doing, I'm building a house in the district, so that'll increase the taxes, and I'll pay mine on time. Thank you.[1464.21][1464.21](laughter)
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Always something extra. Mr. Kraft?
When I left four years ago, we had a large surplus of money in the district O&amp;M Fund, Education Fund, Working Cash Fund, and I think, as Mr. Clark said, we are...the Board of Education are stewards of the taxpayers' money. We have to use it wisely. We need to come up with a prioritized list of needs, not wants, but needs, and act upon those within the budget that is given us. As we all know, the state of Illinois is not in the best shape financially-wise. We all need to be cognizant of the fact that someday in the future that all school districts are going to bear the cost of much more, many more responsibilities, financial responsibilities such as pensions and extra added costs. So we need to be very, very cautious on how we spend our money. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hales?
From my...every understanding that I have, that, you know, we have a surplus here in Collinsville, and I do believe that it is, you know, our right to find out what the needs are in the district and what we need to have, what we need to provide these teachers in order to teach the young students of Collinsville. We need to be fiscally responsible in making those decisions, and we need to make sure that it's going to be the right decision and not just spend it because we have it. But it is definitely there. We need to look at what needs to be improved, and we need to take care of that so that we can improve this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pen?
Well, in the last three years, state budgeting has definitely cut a lot of the funding that most schools in our district and all the neighboring districts have been used to receiving. Like Mr. White said, we have not only stayed afloat, but we have prospered, and I think that's by making good choices and making sure our budget is on track. So whenever the actual situation and the facts are on the table, I think I can make a good and reasonable and fair decision as a taxpayer myself. I think that's how we can maintain and also improve, so thank you.
Thank you all. The next question goes to Mr. Clark, and it is, "Do you believe that some of our elementary schools should be consolidated? Please explain your answer."
First, I believe that there should be a strategic plan in place. I don't think you consolidate just because you can. I think you consolidate because that's the need that is faced before us, and it goes with the strategic plan that has been studied and everything is in place for that to happen, and to look at the needs of our district in the future. I think consolidation is a possibility in the future, but only if the plan is there for it to go forward in a manner that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
Well, you need to have a strategic plan, that's true, but I very firmly believe that neighborhood and community schools are the best place for a young child to learn, not in a consolidated, large school setting. I feel very strongly about this, and I do believe that one thing that Collinsville Unit 10 has going for them, that Edwardsville does not, O'Fallon does not, is the neighborhood and community schools that we offer to our young children. Vitaly important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hales?
Well, I'd have to say that I'm not necessarily in favor of consolidation, especially if it's going to overcrowd classrooms and be a detriment to the student and their learning objectives and possibilities. However, I would say that, you know, if our schools are dilapidated and need being replaced, then we have to have that strategic plan in order to put together the appropriate amount of classrooms, the appropriate amount of teachers, so that we can take care of these young students the way that we can to build that foundation, so...
Thank you. Mr. Penny?
I'm going to say no to that. Again, there is no issue with the budget currently, so I would see no reason to close or consolidate any schools. I think making sure that we have a good student-to-teacher ratio, which right now we do, I would I would just try to maintain that until we have some sort of issue that shouldn't even be, shouldn't come up.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Well, I hate to be non-committal, but my answer would be it depends. Sadly, a lot of our students who should go to an air quote neighborhood school, they don't. They get on a bus and they have to be bused quite a distance anyway to another neighborhood school. We have students who live in Maryville who don't go to Maryville School right now. They go to Renfro. We have students who live in Fairmont City who, they don't go to Creitner, they go to Caseyville. I think the concept of neighborhood schools is fantastic. And I think small classrooms and good teachers is the way to success. But in the end, we have to look closely in what is best for students. And a student being on a bus for twenty minutes each direction to try to preserve the concept of neighborhood school, it's really not effective. And so my short answer is I'd like to see whatever research is presented on any proposal and make an informed decision.
Thank you all. The next question is, what can we do as a school district and community to improve the public image of our schools? And it starts with Mr. Kraft.
I think to have open line communication to all the governmental bodies, making sure that you work with each and every one of them, instilling a sense of cooperation, as well as reaching out to the various organizations that are here in Collinsville. As I heard earlier, they were choosing between the Italian Fest and the Irish Radish Festival. You go up and down the Italian Fest in the main street, you see a number of organizations that do fundraising activities. I think the school district in Collinsville has and will continue to have that kind of working relationship with everybody to embody a good sense of organization and welcoming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One thing before Mr. Hales goes, we have an update on the K-Hawk basketball game at halftime. Unfortunately, they are down by five points right now, twenty-seven to twenty-two. There's still time, so we'll keep you updated. I know it's a pressing issue, so. All right, and we'll throw it back to Mr. Hales.
It's well into the third quarter now. Could you repeat the question for me?
Yes, sir.
Throw me off.
Yes, sir. I apologize. What can we do as a school district and community to improve the public image of our schools?
Well, you know, I think we need to act as a community. I think we need to come together and we all need to work together, like Dr. Kraft mentioned. I think that our governing bodies need to work well with the school board and our school board needs to work well with the teachers and the community. And the community leaders need to come together and we all need to have a voice and a communion and figure out what is going to be best for Collinsville. And we need to vote in that respect. You know, I believe that, you know, I strongly believe, and I've mentioned before, if we improve our facilities, that we're going to improve that image and we're going to get better reflection on Collinsville. And with all that together, you know, our school board works together, we build the facilities, and they will come to go to me.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Penn?
I think by leadership, and that's from administrative down, whether it be with the school board, whether it be with local government, whether it be with our police, fire, and all of our administrators. So I think it's ripple effect. I think starting at the top and then going down and leading that positive example and being a positive role model, I think that's how we can constantly improve and help the students and children.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Well, I believe a lot of it's collaboration. If we get all the municipal governments that embody our school district, and when I say all of them, I mean Fairmont City, Caseyville, Maryville, Collinsville, the unincorporated areas, all work together to promote the district. To tell people all the good things we have going on in Unit Ten. Let them know how good our vocational programs are. Let them know that we're the only public school district on this side of the river that offers Latin. Let them know that Unit Ten has the most advanced placement classes. But also what Rob said, whether we like it or not, curb appeal has a lot to do with where people set up shop. And improve facilities, safer schools, all of that working collectively is what's going to get people to want to move and stay and raise their families in Unit Ten. I'm here for the long haul, but we gotta get more people who really sincerely passionately want to promote Unit Ten. Working together, we can make this work.
Thank you. And Mr. Clark?
Public image starts with us, each one of us. How, what we say about our schools and how we address the needs of our community, all begins with us. We're the ones that have the voice to go out and be that branding of our community. And we need to stand up and be proud of our community. Quit comparing ourselves to Edwardsville and O'Fallon. We are Collinsville, we're K-Hawk strong, and we're gonna stay that way and be proud of it. With that said, one of the things that we need to do, of course, is that communication. Communication with parents and communications from parents to administrators and teachers and with our own students. Be proud of who we are and where we can go because we have endless possibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, when it comes to the issue of district employee salaries, are they too high? Are they too low? Please explain your answer. And that starts with Mr. Hales.
Well, to be completely honest, I don't know. I don't know what every teacher makes in the district. I have not compared them against other districts. I would hope that our teachers are paid fairly. I would hope that our administrators are paid fairly. And that's what, you know, I, on the school board, would want to help achieve, to make sure that we have people that have ambitions to come into work here in Collinsville and want to teach our children. You know, if you underpay a teacher, then to my knowledge, they're not gonna wanna come in here and they're not gonna wanna provide and they're not gonna be excited to learn. So if somebody's paid fairly and they're happy, then I would assume that they were, you know, in my experience, they are gonna come out and they're going to be more energetic on a daily basis and be ready and eager to teach our children.
Thank you. Mr. Penn?
I would, I would need to definitely have research done with what our starting and average salary is in Collinsville and then compare that to the area's salaries and then as well as the state to make sure that we're aligned properly. So that's the way I would need to see that. And then I would come up with a fair decision and then I would bring that to a group to hopefully have a fair group decision. So.
Thank you. Mr. White?
I think our, I think our salaries for employees in the school district are right in line with what they should be. And the reason I say that is if you look at our financial profile, you'll see that we're in very good shape in our education fund. That's the fund that all salaries come out of. But more importantly, in at least the last four years, for certain, we've had a great working relationship with our unions throughout the district. There's not been one sniff of any type of threat of strike or strife. We have a really good relationship, the school board does, with the bargaining units. We work well together. I believe that at least for the last four years, we've been on a one-year contract and we've been able to settle it without there being major disagreements. And I think that's the best indicator that the salaries are right in line. If you still have money in the bank and the employees are happy, I think we're doing pretty well.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Well, I echoed Wayne's sentiments. I truly believe that we are fair and fairly competitive with our surrounding districts and would like to pay teachers more, most definitely. But also, we have to think about that budget and what we have to work with. And it's not just giving a salary for one year, it's compounded over years. It's not just for a one-time shot. It's not like getting a bonus. So you have to think about it in the long term and what that means to the budget. And most definitely, our teachers deserve it. They work very strong. And so do our administrators and all employees. So yes, most definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
I think our teachers are paid fairly well. I think it's in line with the rest of the districts around here. I'm from the old school. I think the one-year contracts are good for one or two years, but I would look like to see the board enter into a working relationship with the local bargaining agents over a multi-year contract. And the reason being, I think you could forecast your cost a little bit better than you would from a year-to-year basis. I do think that we have outstanding teachers throughout the elementary, middle school, and high school. And I think they are being paid very fairly. And I would like, obviously, if we have money to spare and we have it in the education fund, they should be given a very nice raise. Thank you.
Thank you all. The next question is, parts of Caseyville must attend East St. Louis schools. Would you be prepared to support the annexation of this area so these students could attend Collinsville schools? And it begins with Mr. Penn.
Yes, I would. I would. I'm from Fairmont City and that was groundbreaking. Whenever we were allowed to have both sides of Fairmont in the Collinsville School District. I, that's whenever I was a child, but when that day happened, it was positive for everybody. So it was better for the people of Fairmont and I can understand how that would be better for the people of Caseyville.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Yes, I would support that as well. I believe that whether we like it or not, a lot of the students who, or that section of Caseyville probably attend Unit Ten schools anyway. They will either use an address of another family member and/or they'll live with a family member during the school year. So I don't believe it would be impactful on our student population. If you look at our population growth over the last ten years or so, we have not grown exponentially at all. And I know there was some trepidation that when Fairmont City annexed in, that we would have overcrowded classrooms. It didn't happen. And I don't think it will happen if we take in Caseyville as well. The bottom line is this, we want every child to have the opportunity to have a quality education. And this is not a slam against East St. Louis, but a child will get a better quality education in the Collinsville School District than they will in the East St. Louis School District. And every child deserves that opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Yes, most definitely. I'd support it. I think it's a travesty that the city is divided that way. I think that all students, like Mr. White said, and nothing against our neighbor East St. Louis, but I truly believe that those students deserve to get the same education that their fellow residents of Caseyville is receiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
I think the students should also equally get a good education. I would caution us before we look at arbitrarily just bringing a section of a neighboring district in, that we have the facilities to house them. I know Mr. White mentioned something that Fairmont City students did not impact greatly on our enrollment, but we did have over a hundred and twenty-five, I believe, students come into the district. Fortunately, we had enough room to split them between Creitner and Caseyville Elementary Schools. So you need to take a look at your facilities. And while I'm off, straight off the subject just a little bit about facilities, I do believe that Collinsville Unit Ten does have very good facilities. Back in two thousand, we spent sixty million dollars on updating, building new schools and additions. And I do think, and I'm very proud of what Collinsville Unit Ten has in regards to facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hales?
Well, I think I would like to echo everybody's comments. I do believe that, you know, every student in our district has the opportunity to have a quality education. I also believe that, you know, we shouldn't have that line of demarcation within a certain city. You know, I can't believe that, you know, one young man or woman is going to have that opportunity to go to Collinsville High School and the kid across the street might have to go to East St. Louis. You know, I believe that everybody in that city should have the opportunity to go to, you know, if we're calling ourselves Collinsville, Maryville, Caseyville, you know, we ought to act that way. I do understand Dr. Kraft's comments as to we wanna make sure, as I mentioned earlier, that the classrooms are appropriately sized and that the teachers have that ability to teach. We cannot overcrowd our classrooms and we would have to do a study in order to make sure that if we were bringing in those Caseyville students, that there is opportunity for them to succeed.
Thank you. Thank you all. And before we move on to some audience questions, we have an update on the basketball game. Alton is still leading forty-one to thirty-five at the end of the third quarter. There's still time. An update. There we go. There's still time. There's still time. All right, we have a few submitted questions from the audience. The first one is, what are your thoughts on providing a gifted education program? And that starts with Mr. White.
Well, I would love to see the gifted program come back. I think it's very beneficial to students, both short-term and long-term. However, a lot of that comes with needing the funding for the gifted program. And like all things, we have to look closely at the entire scope of the question. If we could implement the gifted program in a way that's fiscally responsible and hopefully we could all work together to maybe raise some money to do that, I would be in favor of it. I think that it does provide opportunities for those high-achieving students to do well early on and later on. But again, some questions, you can't just say yes or no. There are a lot of factors you have to take into consideration. Would I love to see it? Yes. Can I say that we can implement it? That would be disingenuous.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Well, I again echo my fellow board member, Mr. White. Yes, it would, I was, my daughter was privileged enough to be one of those students that went through the Collinsville Gifted Program when we had it years ago. And so I firmly believe in it, yes. But also, we've got to figure out how we can pay for it. And that's the important factor. There are a lot of things that I would like to have, but being able to afford them, you know, is just reality, you know? And so we have to consider all elements, not just what I personally would like. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kraft?
It would be very nice to have an enrichment program such as we had a number of years ago. But as Mr. Clark and Mr. White said, it comes with money attachment to it. The last time I saw the state of Illinois redlined, absolutely redlined gifted education, there's no money to be given to any school district for that. And it is a shame. It would be very nice to have a program in place, as long as it's monitored and correctly and administrated correctly. And I do believe, as Mr. Clark said, there are a number of other items and programs we all would like to have. I think the gifted education program, if the state would partially fund it, Collinsville Unit Ten should look into establishing it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hales?
You know, I probably wasn't around in the high schools to know much about what the gifted program was. Now, that being said, I do know that the high school has college prep courses and I know they have AP courses as well. These courses are designed, and from what everything that I told you or have been told, to better prep these individuals for a college-type course. So if you were going to, if you knew you were going to college, you were gonna take one of those courses because that's gonna get you ready for college. Now, so my question to you, the board, and hopefully it's something that I'll be able to answer in the future, is if we took these courses that are already there and we made them and we challenged those kids that much more, do we then have a gifted program? You know, with the curriculum that we already have, do we push these students to succeed more? Do we take the AP to succeed more? Do we take the AP course and make it what it is, and it's an AP course? And then the college prep course is a step down, and then your regular courses?
Thank you. Mr. Penny?
Again, I think that would be researched as far as what the current budget is, what we're allowed, and what kind of leeway we have, what it would take to implement a gifted program. And also, when other districts have jumpstart programs where certain students that qualify can start taking courses right into SWIC, where they're almost going for dual degrees. So, I do see a lot of value in that, but at the same time, we have to make sure we're within that budget and whatever our set goal would be.
Thank you. That is actually the perfect segue for the next question. It is, "You have all mentioned AP classes. What is your view on dual-credit courses as well?" And that begins with Mr. Clark.
I think there are huge benefits on dual-credit courses, and I think there's a great opportunity for students to further their education at the same time. And those types of courses that we have in place have been successful. So, most definitely. Thank you.
For the dual-credit program, they initiated that about seven or eight years ago at the high school with SWIC. And I think it has grown since I've left, which is very good for just not the students, but for the parents' bank account. I mean, really, it helps out financially for the families because they are receiving a credit here in Collinsville High School as well as in Community College.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hales?
Yeah, it sounds great. You know, I'm for any opportunity for kids to succeed, to save money, to obtain college credit while they're still in high school. You know, having twin boys going through college at the same time is quite a drain on a pocketbook. So, you know, I do know that, you know, my son took a couple of courses and took tests and was able to get through a course without actually having to take it and go into advanced into the second course. So, you know, that's one class he didn't have to take, and I'm thankful for that opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Penny?
Again, I'm for it. I've seen firsthand with students in that program. Mind you, they're maybe missing being in high school with their friends at their age, and they're, some students prosper and mature faster. And if it's their choice, if they're wanting to do that, and they're wanting to go into a dual-credit program, then I think they deserve an opportunity too. I think a budget can probably bed halfway with district and halfway with families and scholarships available. So, I'm for it.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Well, having two boys done at the high school, words can't describe how much I love dual-credit courses. And I'm for as many as we can get. I've been a strong advocate for dual-credit since I've been on the board. I'll continue to be. I believe it provides the students with the opportunity to kind of get their feet wet as far as what college curriculum is. But additionally, as it's been stated here by everybody at the table, it takes a little burden off of the pocketbook. If my sons are lucky enough to get some dual credit prior to going away to a big university, I know not only myself, but my lovely wife would appreciate it immensely. So, yes, I'm in favor.
Thank you all. And the last audience question that we have is, "Do you support Common Core? Why?" And yeah, Mr. Kraft?
I'd have to research it more. No. I really don't. I really don't. I think it should be a local school district's prerogative of how to set up your own curriculum. So consequently, no, I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. Hales?
Well, I would have to agree. I do believe that it's the board and the administration and the community, the school leaders that should come up with the curriculum that we think that, you know, should work for the student and be able to achieve larger-than-life goals.
Thank you. Mr. Penny?
I get frustrated the more I learn about Common Core, and I can understand how the teachers are frustrated with that. I do believe that we need to comply and make sure that our curriculum is aligned and we're following all requirements. But I also believe that a teacher should have the freedom to teach her own class, and that's going to be the most positive way for a student to learn.
Thank you. Mr. White?
No, I'm not in favor of Common Core. School districts are not cookie cutter. There's different dynamics in every district. There's different diverse populations. There's different socioeconomic struggles. You can't just say, "We're going to put out a curriculum and every single school district's going to follow it. There's going to be success." You don't have to look any further than the Noel Child Left Behind that was implemented, I don't know, probably a dozen years ago now. And they said, "We're going to give these standardized tests to every school district, so we're going to have these levels that everybody has to achieve at. Otherwise, you're going to be a failure as a school district." Well, it's not that easy because every school district has its own issues. And to say that we're just going to put curriculum in place and the federal government's going to decide what we do here in Unit 10, it's just not right. Because these are our students, they're our teachers, and we should decide what and how we teach.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
My answer is no. No way. And I'll take it a step further. I'll throw in state testing at the same time. And I've been on, served on committees on state, local, and nationally on the whole issue about Common Core. And I think that not one test or one set of curriculum is going to determine whether I exceeds or I'm exemplar here or I just meet. And that just, one test doesn't tell me what I'm going to do for the rest of my life and should not. And it should not tell us as a community whether we think our school is successful. We know that within our hearts and with the amount of energy that is placed before us by the teachers, administrators, and even the students, and the pride that we have because we are C-Hawks.
Thank you all. All right. Now, it's time for the fun stuff. A rapid response round. The first question goes to Mr. Hales, and it's, "Purple or white?"
Purple.
Mr. Penny?
Purple.
Mr. White? Whoa, wait, wait.
Contrary to what you might think, I'll still say purple.
Mr. Clark?
Oh, most definitely, purple.
Mr. Kraft, purple. We can agree on something. Bobby's or Dairy Haven? And that goes to Mr. Penny?
Dairy Haven, for sure. Sure, but...
Mr. White?
Bobby's. My daughter worked there and lived in Maryville.
Mr. Clark?
Lactose intolerant.
Mr. Kraft?
And I'm getting there. I don't know. Ted Ruz. No. Dairy Haven.
Mr. Hales?
Have you all tried the strawberry sensation? I'm going to have to go with Dairy Haven.
Good deal. "Sports or clubs?" And that goes to Mr. White, please.
Sports.
Mr. Clark?
Oh, activities, yes.
Mr. Chris?
Both. Sports.
Mr. Penny?
Sports.
Textbooks or Chromebooks? And that goes to Mr. Clark?
Chromebooks.
Textbooks. Think I'm leaning towards Chromebooks.
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 Right. And last but not least, what is the last book that you've read? And that starts with Mr. Kraft.
I'm retired, so I get to watch a lot of TV. International House Hunters on HGTV.
You might see Mr. Clark's pop up on there. Mr. Hales?
I think I'm kind of with him. I kind of like those, the Maui shopping. I kind of like the Dan Brown series.
Mr. Penny?
My Red Cross Instructor's Manual. I had to recertify.
Mr. White?
Well, I have a very serious job, so when I read, I read for entertainment, and I'm a big Dean Coons guy. Just finished What the Night Knows. It was really good.
And Mr. Clark?
Well, since I own an antique store and I spend every vacation that I can in Williamsburg, Virginia, and studied the revolution, American Revolution, I, the series by Newt Gingrich on the Revolutionary War era.
Okay. And now, we're going to turn it over to our conclusions. We have two minutes each, and it begins with, I don't remember. I'm sorry. Mr. Hales?
Oh, perfect.
Two minutes for conclusions, yes.
As I mentioned earlier, I came to Collinsville in 1991 based on a high school basketball reputation. I do believe curb appeal has a lot to do with people's decisions in coming to a particular town. It horrified me earlier to hear that we've had 2% growth since 2000, I think it was said. We have a long way to go to get us back into shape to where we're growing. And I think it's our responsibility to work with our community leaders to try to make that happen, to start bringing homes and businesses back to Collinsville. Not that they left, but to come in and start new things. I want to make sure that our teachers have what they need to be able to enrich our students. I want to be sure that our students have safe opportunities to be able to come to school. I travel many school districts doing what I do, and I've had varying relationships of being able to walk into a school almost unannounced and go to a classroom, all the way down to giving up my driver's license and my first child to be able to walk through the door just to get to the office. So, you know, I see different things. You know, I've seen campuses where you can't drive on, where you only have the opportunity to go to a visitor parking area and a security officer escort you to an office. Up to where I believe on our high school campus, you could almost go in between classes, pull up to the gym, and walk right into the cafeteria with all the students. So, you know, I think it's very important that, again, in closing, we provide a nice, safe opportunity for our children's. I want to thank you for this opportunity, and remember to write in Rob Hales on your ballots. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Penny?
I'm going to apologize for doing this backwards, but I'm going to do a little background on myself. From Fairmont City, as far as high school, I was a standout wrestler, All-State and All-American. I got a college scholarship. I went to Northern Illinois University. I wrestled there. I got a teaching degree there. When I graduated, I got my calling, and that was to become a policeman. And I've been a policeman in Fairmont City for three years. I've gained a lot of experience there. And I've also, I've still, as far as wrestling, I coached wrestling from, since I was in high school, I've been coaching at many different levels, from grassroots levels to I was a head coach of a middle school. And I still volunteer at high school-age levels and actually on the national level, too. So, I am normal or used to being around, used to being around children at all different age groups. I'm a juvenile police officer. I teach at SWIC and the AOJ program part-time. So, I've seen the jumpstart program, things like that. That's where I got that. I see it firsthand, and I think I can help. So, I think I'm a good candidate. I think I'm well-educated. I think I'm fair and a reasonable person, and I think I can make knowledgeable decisions as a group. So, I think, I thank everybody for coming. I think I could be a good candidate for the school board, and I would appreciate it if you wrote, I'm a writing candidate, so I would appreciate if you wrote me in, Scott Penny Jr. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. White?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody who put this form together and everybody who came out to take part in it tonight. That alone shows that you care about your community, and I think that's what's going to lead to success, not only at the school district level, but all levels of government. Serving as a school board member, it's a big responsibility, and I take it very seriously. I've been on the board now for eight years. I currently serve on the Budget Committee. I have for four years. I'm the Board Secretary. I've been doing that for four years. And I'm very passionate about being a school board member. You don't run for the school board because you want to get rich. You run for the school board because you care about your school district. I grew up in State Park, and now I live in Maryville. I think I have a very good idea of the different dynamics that go in the Unit 10 schools. And I try to bring that to the table. I've been a career law enforcement officer, and because of that, I have a passion for keeping people safe. And I've shown that since I've been on the board. I fight at every meeting for more funding to be put toward safer schools, safer for students, safer for the staff. And I'll continue to do that. I love the Council School District. I graduated from here in 1990. My daughter graduated just a couple of years ago. My sons are currently at CHS. It's my prayer that my kids will have children, and they'll go to Unit 10 schools. I had an opportunity many years ago to move to Glen Carben. In fact, they were going to pay me $100 a month to move to Glen Carben if I built a house there. I worked in Glen Carben for 20 years, but I didn't want to move to Glen Carben because then my kids wouldn't be C-Hawks. My name is Wayne White. I'm a C-Hawk now. I'll be a C-Hawk for life, and I hope you vote for me on April 7. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Well, I stand before you as a school board member running for reelection for one reason, one reason only, my mother. And she's 89 years old, and I said to her, "Mom, I don't know whether I want to do this again or not." And I said, "I sure hope that qualified candidates run for the office." And she said to me, as all southern mothers do, she goes, "Son, hope is not a strategy. You have to have a plan." And her voice said, "You need to run for reelection." And so, that's one of the main reasons that I'm here, but I'm also here because I truly believe in this community, not just the school district, but the complete community. We're good people. We're hard workers, and we truly, truly love the area in which we live. I want, yes, to push our community further. I want to further our, the school district. I want to create a, to continue with creating a strategic plan for our school district and certainly look at the number of different options and things that have been brought before us this evening. But I also want to spend our taxpayer money wisely and to be conscious and to ensure a future for not just this generation, but for the generations to come. I've been in this community long enough, and I know most of you. And I know that you truly do have the best interest of what, for our schools and for our community. And I hope that you will vote for Gary Clark for school board on April the 7. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Kraft?
Some people are saying, "Are you nuts for wanting to run for the school board after 37 years?" I would like to give back to the school district and to the community. As I mentioned, I've lived here all my life. I do believe sincerely in Council Unit 10. I've seen it grow. We've had our hiccups. We've had some issues, but we've weathered the storm. And I do believe I would like to be part of the school board on the other side of it. I've been on the administration side, the teacher's side. I would like very much to be on the Board of Education, dealing with the problems and the accomplishments that we can see in the Council Unit 10. Students, I've acquired throughout my 37 years a knowledge of working with curriculum, staff development, human resources, mediations, budgets, student dis... the staff development, human resources, mediations, budgets, student discipline. I'd like to share that knowledge and help with the school board in the future, in the next four years. I believe the school board will have to make some very difficult decisions. They have and they will continue to make this difficult decisions de, dealing with funding constraints. Future boards of education will have to prioritize their needs. And, and those are dealing with just not staffing issues, but what are we going to offer as we've talked about up here earlier, the programming for our students? We have a very diverse population here in Collinsville Unit 10 and will continue to have one. How are we going to meet those needs and I like to be part of the board to help direct the district in the future? In closing, I'd like to ask for your support and your vote on April seventh. I am a writing candidate. You either have to fill in the oval or make an X, whatever the ballot says, and also put down Dennis Craft, D-E-N-N-I-S-C-R-A-F-T. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
All right. Thank you all very much. That concludes our school board segment. Give them all a big round of applause.